I would like to call our work session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Madison?
Here.
Mr. Majors?
Here.
Ms. Rolls?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us tonight. You'll notice one addition to our agenda, in addition to our committee business this evening. I've invited Commissioner Thomas Carter to join us for communications. I believe everyone is aware of the fight that occurred at John Harris High School last week on September twenty seventh. I wasn't sure if everyone had an opportunity to see the statement that the superintendent offered on September twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two, followed by a press release from the city of Harrisburg shared on September twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-two. In both of the statements, there is a discussion of a coordinated effort between the mayor, the city of Harrisburg, and the Harrisburg School District. So I invited Commissioner Carter, if you're at liberty, to share any of the plan. I just wanted to make the members of the public, parents and students that share concern about their safety, aware of what to expect on behalf of the Harrisburg Bureau of Police.
Well, Madam President, thank you for having me here. But there really hasn't been anything that I can talk about between the school district and the city yet. They are still talking. The mayor is still talking to the superintendent. I know that the school district has hired a young man and he's going to be their new safety and security officer. He's looking to modernize the forty-plus security personnel that they have. We offered to train them, and so the conversation is still taking place on how we're going to be able to support the school district. We have been out there every day for different incidents. The school district and superintendent, they're doing everything that they can quite possibly do at this present time, and we're supporting them there. Today, we were out there because of a threat of a shooting. And it's an ongoing process that we're involved with the school district. I believe that the school district cares for our kids as all our city council does. We want nothing but the best for them. And my police agency, the mayor's office, and the whole city will do everything that we can quite possibly do to make sure that our kids get an education that matches everybody else in the current area. I cannot get into other things that you should know about, but you know, once something is finalized, we'll be able to talk about it further.
No, thank you. I think just these updates are helpful in the fact that the Bureau of Police offered to train the security personnel. Now, with the daily patrol of the high school, are these officers that are present or community service aides? I think there were some questions amongst residents.
There are both, ma'am. We have officers out there in the CSA's. They also stop out there too. Myself and my deputy chief have been visiting schools. We've been in the cafeterias. We've been talking to the kids and engaging with them, eating lunch with them. It's only a small segment of the population that is causing the problems. And as soon as we can do something with that segment of the population, I believe that Harrisburg High School will be able to move forward, and the students can learn without the problems that they're currently faced with.
Okay. Thank you. I will open up the floor to questions from my colleagues. Not sure if they have any questions for you, but thank you for coming and thank you for clarifying. I'll begin to my far left with Councilman Rodriguez, our Public Safety Chair.
No current questions. I was in quite a few of those meetings when the offer to train some of the staff took place, so no current questions. Thank you for being here, Commissioner.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Majors, any questions?
Just, just a couple. Thank you for being here. I guess the first question I have is, would you be able to be able to share the name of the individual that the school district did hire? You said to run the forty personnel.
He's a retired state trooper.
I'm not sure the board has got that far. I'm not sure they've gotten presented to the board.
Okay, so, so they're looking to bring somebody in. They may still need to go before the school district, the school board for, or receiver for, okay.
They have somebody. They had his name in the Sunday paper along with it.
Okay, that's what I said. If it's, yeah, if it's a public record, we can.
We don't allow such things to happen.
Right, yes. Okay. All right. So I'll, I'll go through the paper then.
I can tell you this, sir. He's a retired police chief from Exeter Township, I believe. And he's a retired state trooper.
Okay. Well, I'll save my other questions then. That gets us some information we'll have to get from the school district. Thank you. Thank you, President Bowers.
You're welcome. Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
I don't have any questions at the moment. I look forward to updates when something more formalized comes out. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Madison, any questions?
No questions from me. Thank you for the update.
Okay, and Councilwoman Ross, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers, and thank you for being here tonight, Commissioner Carter. I just have one question. Let me make sure I'm formulating it correctly, but yes, I know the school district I see is putting some things into place, and I love how we are working with them as a police department. I think that's important. I was also wondering how are we getting the parents involved in helping? Because I don't think it's just a school district issue, but I think it's a community issue, and I do think parents should be involved in helping combat this as well.
That's very true, and I feel the same way. And I think that is something that the school district should be working at, because we had a very hard no. We don't want the police at our school. We don't want the police around our kids. You know, we're here for a support mechanism for our kids. So, you know, I think that that's a conversation that the school board, along with the superintendent and everybody else, should have with their parents.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know if you had any information on that, but thank you. I appreciate that.
Well, thank you again, Commissioner Carter, for being here tonight and for clarifying some information that people may have just read and wondered about next steps. So please keep us posted. Of course, you're always welcome to come back if there's information that you can share at a later date. We'd appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to our committee business. The first committee that you will hear from tonight is the Administration Committee. We will discuss Resolution Fifty-four of two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution fifty-four, twenty twenty-two, a resolution appointing Marietta J. Kelly, Gregory S. Daler, and Stephen Greer to serve as the, on the LERTA appeals board.
Thank you. At this time, I would invite Ms. Marita J. Kelly, Mr. Gregory S. Daler, and Mr. Stephen Greer Williams to join us here for questioning.
Madam President, the worker administrators here as well, Jason and Chris.
Thank you. That's fine. Thank you. Mr. Graves, you're not absent from this conversation. Okay, well, thank you all for joining us this evening. We certainly appreciate you taking time out of your evening. Mr. Graves, would you like to provide an overview of the LERTA appeals board for the record?
Yes, the LERTA appeals board is.
Oh, excuse me, one second. And you can introduce yourself. I'm not sure if you've been before, Councilman.
No, I'm Jason Graves. I am the Director of Business Development, also the LERTA Administrator for the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Just give a quick overview, overview of what the LERTA board does. Anything, anytime that we basically have to go any agenda moments or basically any fixes or any prompts or anything as far as with the LERTA, dealing with any kind of abatement issues as far as there are any denials or anybody has any questions about LERTA, dealing with the tax abatement and so forth. So we are all here basically to see if or when, if the con arises, we just go over certain things to see if we can actually come up with a quick resolution or fix.
Okay, thank you. So this board, on this board, the city of Harrisburg has represented, Dauphin County and the Harrisburg School District have appointed the following individuals. Ms. Marita J. Kelly would be the city appointee. Mr. Gregory S. Daler would be the Dauphin County appointee. And Mr. Stephen Greer Williams would be the Harrisburg School District appointee. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Well, if each of you wouldn't mind taking a few moments just to introduce yourselves.
Sir, good evening, Madam President. My name is Marita J. Kelly, and I am the city's Finance Director, as you know. But I have played a major role with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, with the Department of Community and Economic Development relating to LERTA, and if you have questions and would like me to explain that later, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Stephen Williams, I'm the Harrisburg School Board Vice President. I have a policy background and spent time working for the Finance Committee, which dealt with tax issues, or tax legislation, I should say.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Greg Daler. I'm the Director of Tax Assessment and Tax Claim for Dauphin County. I've been in my position for two years now, and I follow Steve Howell, who was a former, the former chief of, Director of Assessment, and he was also on the LERTA board from two thousand seventeen through the end of twenty twenty-two.
Thank you very much. I just have one question before I open the floor to my colleagues for comments and questions. You've all, I believe, spoken about your expertise. That would be fitting for this board, but is there anything else or any impact that you believe that you will have by your service?
If you don't mind, I'll begin then.
Sure.
I, as I mentioned, I am a former Commonwealth of Pennsylvania employee, and I worked for the Department of Community and Economic Development for the Center for Local Government Services, and I was the Deputy Director. And we helped to administrate, administer the LERTA program, and we also encourage economic development through the LERTA program, and later I became the Central Regional Director for the Department of Community and Economic Development. In that, I was very involved with Dauphin County in particular, particularly the city of Harrisburg, and several individuals who sought LERTA through, through our, our work at the Commonwealth. So just wanted to inform you of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Yep, so my experience with LERTA is not as extensive. However, I did spend time working for the Finance Committee, which focused on legislation around such measures, and I just want to, you know, be a voice for the Harrisburg School District on this board and make sure that we work towards, you know, economic development that benefits, you know, all folks in Harrisburg.
Thank you. And Mr. Daler?
Yes, so when I took my position as Director of Tax Assessment about almost two years ago, I had the opportunity to meet Jason, and together we decided that it was very important that the county and the city work together. And we've had a number of meetings and discussions at which time. So it's important that the, that the county is up to date with whatever is going on with the LERTA program, because we work in conjunction with the city of Harrisburg as far as the implementation of the abatement program. So we have to, you know, determine, well, once, once the abatement is decided upon, then it's, it's, it's. then it's, it's, it's our duty to do, to take care of all, all of the paperwork, documentation, and see the abatement through from the assessment stand. So, uh, Jason had asked me, uh, based on my background, if I would be interested in serving on the board, and I said, sure, I would be.
Well, thank you for your interest, and thank you all for your explanation, I do have one follow-up question for you, Mr. Daler, about the county's role in, I guess, in forming, um, residents of the LERTA, because we run into an issue where there are a series of houses participating in the LERTA program, they're all in different programs. There is an assumption amongst some residents that the LERTA begins when they move into the home rather than the LERTA beginning when the home is built. So, of course, that could be a four or five-year difference in taxes. Um, so, what notification is the county responsible for?
Okay, um, so from my understanding, once we receive all the documentation, so we receive documentation from the city, which, um, includes whether a particular pa- uh, property is included or should be part of an abatement. And then, once, um, similar to when a, a new resident moves into a home, so if, if a contractor is building a home, it takes him a year, two years to complete the home, um, we have a thirty-month period that prior to us putting the assessment on. So, my understanding is the LERTA works similar, that, um, once the property is occupied, then we enact the, we send the change of assessment notice indicating that there is an abatement, um, that the assessment could, will start, commence, and then the abatement program will be applied to that.
Thank you for clarifying. I'll begin with questions from Councilwoman Ross, any questions?
Uh, thank you, President Bowers, and thank you for all of you being here tonight, I, I'm learning a lot here with the LERTA program. So, this is basically, um, just generally speaking, not tax-free, but you wouldn't be paying taxes for a certain amount of years or months while you are either like redoing your house or building a new property, is that what I'd be correct? Okay, so, and that's for anybody to say yes to, just so I'm right, so, um, how do you, I guess, communicate, almost like what President Bowers was saying, but a little bit different? How are we letting the community know about this program? Because I know, um, buying a home in the city, um, I live in Bellevue Park, it's an older house, we're doing a lot of work. I knew nothing about the LERTA program, where I could have saved some money on not having to pay my taxes and put it towards my house that does need a lot of repairs, but I didn't know anything about it, so how are we, um, letting the community know about this program?
So, there is some literature out there, it's like older literature, so since there has not been a board for some time, so the first thing that basically we're going to do is basically get together so we can actually put down the correct information, what people need also, get along with Neil as well, so we make sure all the wording is going to be corrected, to see what, so we can give you the correct information, so I know, um, one of the things as far as like people were doing, like, um, rentals or anything for their homes or anything like that, there is an amount that you do have to reach before you can actually be, uh, actually can actually accept to even get an alert. So, it is over a certain amount, and I know I spoke with, uh, with Greg about that multiple times, but a lot of people do actually fill out, but they're not eligible for it because they do not reach the actual amount for the LERTA they actually get, so there is an amount, it's for actually something that's actually going to change the assessment of your property. So, it has to reach a certain amount.
I understand, and is there a, a deadline for when you move into your property that you're not allowed to apply for the LERTA?
Uh, for the most part, it actually just goes on a lot of times with, if you're getting your permits. So, you, you basically fill it out when you're actually filling out for your permit, you should, by rule of thumb, you should fill everything, the time you fill your permits out, that way you don't gloss in the shuffle as far as like backdating or waiting in timeframes, because if you reach that timeframe, it's, you're going to probably be out of luck as far as like trying to go forward with it. So, we, there are a lot of people who go back and forth saying, okay, I filled this out, but not actually meeting the time criteria. So, speaking with, um, another guy from the county, um, when there's a new bill, it's a lot easier because nothing's actually laid out in stone yet, so they're not actually doing anything yet, but when you're actually have an actual, uh, the, a property already done already, and you're going in, that's where it gets kind of tricky, so you should, a rule of thumb, you should have do everything right then and there versus waiting. Especially if you're doing renovations or you're on the home, if you go try to go back and do it, it's going to put you behind.
Okay, there's certain times.
Yes.
Okay, so that's something we'll have to also work on letting people know as they're getting the permits, and so there's communication needed, but like you said, there hasn't been a board.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all right, okay, that's good to know, because I think this is a question a lot of our residents have. I've heard whispers of LERTA, but not fully understanding.
And, and I might, uh, further clarify in terms of the Department of, uh, Community and Economic Development, our primary interest was in businesses. So, that doesn't mean that residents are, aren't eligible, but most of the work that I was involved with were, were businesses on that Third Street corridor, businesses on the Seventh Street corridor, um, businesses on Market Street, so, so a lot of the work that we do through the department is to encourage, uh, business development, it's not exclusive, but from the department's standpoint, our main goal was to encourage businesses and encourage the economy to, to build, rebuild the economy and, and, and bring new businesses into your community by way of having this tax abatement available to those business owners, just thought I'd clarify that.
Okay, no, thank you, I mean, because the business owners are important too, I just know a lot of residents are, are moving back in, they want to move back into the city, or they're trying to, you know, um, renovate their homes.
Yeah, a lot of residents have questions, I know, a lot of things get flagged, and it comes back to us to say, hey, is there eligible for an abatement? So, we actually have a report running, so we can actually catch everything, because a lot of people, a lot of people fill out LERTA for like, things that are like for furnaces, or maybe you have to get some shingle, like, it's like smaller things. So, if you're doing like a complete rental of your apartment, of your home or whatever, and it reaches a certain amount, you should be eligible for an abatement.
Okay, thank you, that's good to know, I look forward to seeing that, that more communication, and maybe even workshops or something so the community knows this is what it is, is how you, you know, fill it out, so, thank you, no further questions?
Thank you, Councilman Mattson, any questions?
So, for this year, or since you've been in the role, how many applications have we had for the LERTA? That have qualified?
That's going to be probably something I have to get back to you by, I should pull a report for that, because I know we've been running a couple of other reports for other things for past years, so that's something I'm going to have to run a report for to get you an actual number.
Oh, so there are applications?
Yeah, there are, okay, yeah, there are a few, yeah, so it's an actual, I'll have to pull a report for you to get you some actual-
So, in the past, I know we, it was a little sparse.
Yeah.
There wasn't a whole lot of interest in the LERTA.
Yeah, we have a few, I just, I know off the hand, I don't know the exact number.
Okay, because some of the pushback I've got from developers for the LERTA is that some don't like that it's kicks in prevailing wage, for example, or, um, we've also put some incentives for affordable housing and minority participation. I just wanted to know if you were still, if you were hearing similar pushback?
Not really, because I know the, on the last, one of the last stories I know that I did that was dealing with, uh, on affordable, affordable housing is a, I'm not going to say the number, because they actually haven't started the, the actual, um, address yet, because they haven't started to work yet, but it's in, in the vicinity, it's a high-rise in the vicinity for dealing with elderly people, so they actually, yeah, so, yeah. So, that one, there, that's actually in the works now, there's, there's been a few, but it's, it's in between, but it's been a few, so I can get you an actual number, actually, as far as on that aspect, I can probably pull a number to see who's actually done it, so.
Yeah, just for the record, for me,
Okay.
I feel like we have a ten-year abatement, which is pretty generous. So, I think asking for livable wages,
Yeah.
local participation, and/or providing affordable housing is fair.
Yes.
Uh, I know some in the private sector do not feel that way, but just want to put that on record there. Or, I like our LERTA.
Yes.
But, I guess my question for the potential applicants here is having reviewed our LERTA, do you think we could do some changes to make it more effective or enticing for developers, or um, do you think it's good the way that it is? Start right to the left.
Mr. Mattson? Can, can I ask that, because this is a board that actually makes a quasi judicial determination on an applicant, that they probably shouldn't weigh in on the statute that they're going to rule upon.
Yeah.
So, if that makes any sense.
It does.
Thank you.
Never mind. Yeah, um, I'll save that for the administration. Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers, and thank you all for being here tonight. Um, I don't have too many questions for the applicants, uh, I feel like these are all very sensible, uh, appointments, uh, while they're different entities, so I don't have any questions for that, uh, I do have a question for you, Mr. Graves. Um, I know the LERTA has some requirements, um, that are, are triggered depending on how much it is, um, such as uh, prevailing wage and, um, minority participation, how are we monitoring compliance?
Uh, right now, there are a lot of, I like, want to say a lot of advocates that we actually have, for the most part, some advocates we already have, I think there has not, I think I may have had a couple of questions as far as like prevailing wages. Um, it just basically goes by the prevailing scale if they're actually going to go with a public sector project or not. It just, it really just depends. It really just depends, so with the monitoring process of that, we're actually trying to get through that now, as far as like we were saying before, as far as our relationship with the county now. So, it's, this is basically an ongoing thing that we're actually going to try to monitor to get a little bit better at.
Okay, so it's still a work in progress?
It's still a work in progress.
All right.
I should have just kept it simple, yes, it's still a work in progress, yes.
Okay, um, I don't think I have any other questions, I believe I was on a school board when we passed this originally, so I voted for it on the school board, um, I'm glad to see it's still in effect, uh, glad to see the board getting back to work, and and hopefully we can advertise this more so that more residents and more small businesses know about it and can take advantage of it. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Councilman Majors, any questions?
Thank you, uh, yes. Well, first of all, thank you all for your, uh, willingness to serve for your respective, uh, agencies, we appreciate that. Glad to have this board, uh, that's reconstituted, I guess for Mr. Graves, just one question. Uh, when was the last time that we did have a full LERTA board?
Your question, I want to say, yeah, because a lot of, a lot of people retired, like completely tired, so they're out of, out of like, out of sight, out of mind as of right now.
Okay, and then, since that time, were there any appeals that we weren't able to, to hear due to not having?
Not really a hundred percent sure about it, but I'm going to say no on that one, because I know there, I looked through a lot of the, from what was active, uh, I looked through a lot of the minutes or from the past prior board, I didn't really see any, but that's something I could probably get back to you about.
Okay.
But as far as my, no, as far as my knowledge, I would say no.
A- and just, I can advise you, because our office is solicitor to the board, um, there has not been any formal appeals. There has actually not been any formal appeals ever for the LERTA Appeal Board, um, and that, that's partly because construction takes so long, and determination isn't made until the project is complete. Um, there was one informal, what I would call, for someone who did not fill out the paperwork, uh, and felt strongly they should be allowed to get the benefit anyway, which runs contrary to base state law and the city ordinance. Um, I guess they could have sued about that if they wanted to, but they had just simply not done the paperwork on the front end and wanted to get the benefit.
Right, to be.
Right, so, that's, that's the closest we've come to an actual appeal, so.
All right, thank you, and then I guess for, uh, I guess, Mr. Daler, since you do work with the county, have you had to deal with, are there any appeals at the county level that maybe?
I'm, uh, in the year and nine months I've been in the position, I haven't seen.
There is, yeah, okay. All right, thank you, uh, no, no further questions. Thanks.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
Most questions are asked, the only one that's, that I would like to know is if you, each could identify areas of potential conflicts of interest between existing activities and the, the role of the board members?
It's my understanding I have no conflict of interest that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I have no conflict of interest that I'm aware of as either.
I do not have any either, but if any arise, I will certainly, uh, make the, uh, board aware of them.
That's it for me, thank you.
And, um, and also just to mention, I was proactive with, um, letting the county solicitor know that I would be applying for the board, and he, uh, just recommended to me if there are any conflicts to let him know.
Thank you. Finally, Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, thank you, Ms. Kelly, uh, Mr. Daler, and Mr. Greer for being here this evening, and your willingness to serve, of course. Um, my questions were answered, they were more geared towards the promotion and how we could amplify its awareness a bit more, so, um, just keep it up, and I look forward to seeing what you guys do, thank you.
Thank you. I have, um, I guess, two questions for Mr. Grover. The first one is Mr. Williams's name is not, um, shared correctly in the resolution, so I wanted to note that.
Our apologies, we will give you a corrected one for next week.
Okay, and then I just wanted to clarify the term.
I, I believe-
Is it indefinite, or how?
I believe it is indefinite, but I would have to look back. They serve until replaced. Um, it, it's on, it's not like the municipality boards, and each entity has the right to name their person.
Okay.
Um, and the board, the council reserved the right when the ordinance adopted to approve that, that appointment.
I just wanted to clarify that, um, I thought that they served until, um-
Until their boss says they don't have to.
Built by someone else, but I understand. Any other questions or comments for our potential LERTA Appeals Board deputies? Being and hearing them, thank you all for your presence tonight. Mr. Truesdale, I would like to add Resolution fifty-four of two thousand twenty-two to our next legislative session agenda. Thank you, this concludes the work of the Administration Committee. The next committee you will hear from is the Public Works Committee. Chair Mattson?
Hey, thank you, President Bowers. Um, could Resolution fifty-five be read into the record, please?
Resolution fifty-five twenty-two, a resolution appointing Mr. Percy Bullock to serve on the Coordinating Committee of the Harrisburg Area Transportation Study.
Bullock? Okay, state your name for the record?
Good evening, Council, um, Percy Bullock, um, Project Manager, City Harris.
Great, thank you. And, um, tell us a little bit about the, uh, committee that you are going to be potentially serving on?
Uh, the HATS is the Harrisburg Area Transportation Study, basically funded by the federal government, and some of the funding that goes through it's, uh, Cumberland, Perry, and Dauphin County, and funding is brought together by the board, excuse me, by, uh, civil county, the counties with their municipalities come together, including some in the area of seventeen hundred, municipalities come together, and it's, this is the monies from the, uh, this, this board, Highway Board, and what happens is it goes through, and they come together as a board, I represent, I will be representative of City Harrisburg. And, uh, there's also a representative of Cat from, uh, and as well as Penn, along with the other three counties that I'm in. Take a, make a decision on the monies and distribute it best as it comes in.
Okay. Um, this one seems pretty straightforward to me. Anytime staff get asked to serve on these boards, just like to ask, do you feel like, um, because I know we have a limited staff capacity, is this going to be burdensome towards you, do you think you'll be able to encompass this with your day-to-day work as well?
No, I do not believe that that'd be the case, uh, I love a challenge, it's something new myself, and, uh, doing so, I'm very interested in seeing what the rest of the counties in Pennsylvania balls themselves into, and the only way to do it is get yourself dirty and get into it.
Very good. Okay. Uh, again, it's a pretty straightforward to me, so I'll just, uh, open it up to questions now for my colleagues, and I will start to my far left with Councilman Rodriguez. Again, it's appreciated for me, so I'll just open it up to questions now for my colleagues, and I will start to my far left with Councilman Rodriguez.
How you doing, Mr. Bullock?
Thank you.
Can you break down just briefly what exactly the main obligation you will hold for the City of Harrisburg on this board, like specifically?
Just as, as I stated earlier, I'll be representative of Harrisburg City. We sit different from Dolphin County. And whatever information or monies that come down the pipe from the federal government, federal highway administration, I'll bring it back here to the staff and see what they want to do with it. If we want to fight for the monies and put our best application in.
So it's like proposal-based?
Correct.
Okay, and so you'll have pretty much a seat at the table with PennDOT then, have someone to kind of there, and I'll always applaud that, so thank you. Appreciate you being here this evening.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels?
Just if you can think of areas of conflicts of interest between your current role and the study board.
No, in fact, our previous predecessor put his position was pretty much the same thing. So, you know, it's kind of fall sink and hairs fail to see. We've missed out this past year, so we want to get right back on the, you know, the road and have a speak and see.
Hey, Councilman Major?
Thank you, and yes, glad to have representation back on this board. The one question I do have, and it may not stop for you, Mr. Bullock, because again, as you mentioned, the people that have sat at the end, the engineering department have traditionally served on this board. I don't know if it's for the administration or you, Chair Madison, have you heard of any additional names coming down? I know City Harrisburg does have two seats on hats.
Correct, the second name is Jeffrey Knight.
Who I think is still there.
Still there?
Yes.
Okay, all right, now, I just double-checked their website and they have Ambrose Buck listed as, so.
I will double-check. There's actually a total of four seats related to this?
Yeah, there's two on the technical and two on the coordinating, so, okay.
But I will double-check and see if the last appointment was Ambrose or not.
Okay, I just want to verify and make sure. All right, thanks, no further questions.
Thank you, President Bowers.
Thank you. Mr. Bullock, you mentioned your predecessor, so that would have been former city engineer, Mr. Wayne Martin. I guess my question is, should the city have our own engineer again? Will, are you, will you serve in this capacity on a temporary basis until an engineer is hired? Or is your appointment, I guess, indefinite as well?
Appointment is one-year indefinite in that, in that situation. And you're correct about Wayne Martin being a person before me. But as Commissioner Majors has spoke of, Ambrose, Ambrose Buck was a project manager like I am. And he's set full term as well, and a lot of the others are not engineers, so just representing the department.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yes, ma'am.
And Madam President, essentially, it's the mayor's discretion of who she appoints, so.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify because you mentioned his predecessor who is, was the city engineer, so I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Vice President Green?
I don't have any questions for you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, Councilman Rawls.
Good evening, Mr. Bullock. Thank you for being here today. Actually, my questions have been asked and answered. I was wondering too what it entailed, what you needed to do and how long the term was, so, thank you.
Is there any other additional questions?
Just, just a quick comment. Excuse me, so, and it's just clarification, so I guess we do, we, the names for the coordination committee, because as you noted, Mr. Grover, Mr. Knight serves on the technical committee, so we still have a potential vacancy, so, because and to Council President, we have, we still have one vacancy on the coordinating committee. Those coordinating committee members were Wayne Martin and Ambrose Buck. Ambrose Buck is no longer employed by the City of Harrisburg, so I I'm gonna just follow that logic and believe that he is no longer serving on HATS coordinating, so to President Bowers' point, would that vacancy then potentially be served filled by a city engineer, which would have been a project manager, engineer relationship?
If we, the seats are appointed by the mayor, they've both been vacant. I'm unaware that Mr. Buck has anything left to do with HATS. And so, you know, but this is the only name that we have at the moment going forward, and I'm sure the mayor will forth another name when she has another appointment for the other seat.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I recommend that we put Resolution fifty-five up for a vote at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Madison. The final committee business you will hear this evening will come from the Public Safety Committee, Chair Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. I am Chair Rodriguez, Chair of the Public Safety Committee for the Harrisburg City Council. We will begin by reading Resolution fifty-six. Mr. Truesdale, can you read Resolution fifty-six and for the record?
Resolution fifty-six, twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to submit a grant application to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for a grant under the law, local law enforcement support grant program of up to five million dollars to support the police bureau's efforts to reduce violent crime throughout the city.
Thank you for that. And who from the administration will be here to represent? I see DC is the commissioner. Thank you for being with us once again this evening. DC, awesome, thank you. Deputy Chief, would you like to give a overhaul or overview of the resolution, please?
Yes, so what I did in preparation for letting you know about this grant opportunity was I put this little one-page document, just to give you an overview about what is available and what we intend on, at least at this point, putting in for. As you can see, one, the top part of that, the deadline is thirteen October. To tell you how we got here, on the first of September, the Executive Director, Michael Pennington, of the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, sent out a multiple grant opportunities for cities across Commonwealth or governmental bodies across Commonwealth to put in for grants, depending on what their citizen population size was based off the twenty twenty census. So when you looked at the, we are a municipality, according to the grant, of a size between eighteen thousand and fifty-five thousand, which would be a maximum award amount of five thousand, I'm sorry, five million dollars per grant. One is a local law enforcement grant, and the other one is a gun violence, I think it's investigation and prosecution grant. So those two grants, the, the four that were available, they came out in one September. We found out about them the next week. We it was a little, even at the county level, it was a little hard to believe the amount of money that they were offering to jurisdictions. It's not just to the Harrisburg Police, it was to multiple, every police department across the Commonwealth, every county across the Commonwealth, every city across the Commonwealth, so for the gun violence investigation and prosecution grant, they're making, I think it was fifty, yeah, fifty million dollars of the American Rescue Plan money available for these jurisdictions. And for the local law enforcement grant, I believe is a hundred and thirty-five million in federal funds available. And that's what they're using that money for. Now, you have to apply for those, fill out an application in e-grants, and that's where Rebecca Volmer comes in, if she is the, like, the grand administrator for the City of Harrisburg. And she has the luxury of putting my information that I try to provide her into the system. And we basically apply for projects we want to do. That's a pretty short timeline. And it's a, really, it's, but it is an opportunity I don't think we should bypass because, you know, as we either enhance or improve the technology within the bureau to address, and this is all in ref, in reference to reducing gun violence and increasing clearance rates or arrests and prosecutions of those type of crimes. And so as you can see through the, as we go down through the local law enforcement grant first, they have five categories which you're able to apply for. And each one would, you have to tie each request you have into how it will reduce violent crime or gun violence, and how would it increase your clearance rate or arrest rate for those types of crimes. So for the law, local law enforcement grant, we've looked at, as, as I'm just gonna go through the, how we expect to utilize that grant funding, and this is, this is all draft. We kind of, I worked on the local law enforcement one first because it was a lot more in-depth. There was a lot more questions to answer. I think the application was fifty-two pages long, or whatever it was. But every request had questions. You had to tie it into those, those parameters and try and explain how you would use that equipment to do that. So the first one, we as, we have a, we, we wear body worn cameras now, and it's pretty good technology, but that contract expires in April of two thousand twenty-three. So we've already been in contact with that vendor, but as, as you know from the past one, is, that is, we have to go through the procurement process for that. We have to look at other technologies that are out there and available, then we have to make a decision, and then we have to enact that. So because that contract is expiring, and the grant specifically mentions that kind of technology, body worn camera, we're going to use that as the impetus to pay for the grant opportunity is for two years, it'd be for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. So we can use that body worn camera cost for those two years to cover that portion that the city would normally pay for out of pocket. And this is a significant, significant expense. I don't even remember what the last one we bought for these ones was, but we're looking, it's a, between a two hundred and seventy to a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar expense. So that'd be a significant savings for the city. You don't want to bypass. License plate readers, we looked at that before. It was cost prohibitive. But there are already mobile video recording devices in the cars that work in conjunction with our body worn cameras, and all it would do is we would upgrade that technology to allow it to view a license plate of a car we are looking for. Because the officer may not see it, but the license plate reader may, and the technology would give them a a signal or a, something would pop up on the screen saying that, hey, this, this plate's in our system, this is what is being looked for. He just passed it. So we intend on applying for that also. Purchase a laser scanner for forensic investigators to process major crime scenes. Again, technology's out there. When we go to a, let's say we go to a shooting incident where someone is shot, the, our forensic investigators from the criminal investigation division, they come out. They, they photograph the scene, they start collecting evidence, but they also have to draw a sketch. And right now, they're drawing that on paper, and they use a measuring wheel to, to get the measurements from a known point. And then they make a courtroom presentation with that, but it's all a hand-drawn map. They could probably convert that to some kind of, something on a PowerPoint or something like that to present in court. But at the end, it's, it's time-consuming, it's it's, it's like watching old TV shows, and you're, you're like, we know we can do better. They have a new, it's a laser scanner that would reduce the amount of time, make it more accurate, and what it basically does is you put down no markers in a crime scene, and it gives you exact measurements of distances down to the inch. It will photograph that crime scene. In other words, you can walk through it almost like a three D picture. It's pretty impressive. We looked at it before, and the cost was too prohibitive, and we didn't even ask for it. But if we can get that, and can we directly tie that to reducing gun violence or violent crime and increasing clearance rates? Absolutely. Are additional nuns, support, non-sworn support personnel? So, an evidence custodian, we have two patrol officers who handle our evidence right now. It is a overwhelming job. The hardest part is, is in the collection of it, is the storing of it, getting it to the lab, getting it back for core purposes. So our intent is to utilize the grant funding to pay for that position for two years. And in the twenty twenty-three budget, we intend on asking for evidence custodian anyway. So this would be an opportunity to fund that position for two years. The other ones, and I'm sure you'll have questions on this, is I know that in twenty twenty-two for this year, Captain Hooper and Director Houston had asked for six more community service aides. That was not granted. But this would give us an opportunity to hire those positions and pay for them for the grant out of the grant money, if that's what you wanted to do. Retention bonuses to Bureau employees is one of the categories that, that originally came out that they sent letters to officers saying, hey, you can get a retention bonus for being a police officer and a, every officer in a Commonwealth. It's no red tape, no frills, you just have to apply for it, and then it turns out you had to fill out a fifty-three page application. Which, so we're gonna put in for a retention bonus for Bureau employees. Initiate and enhance officer wellness programs. We we have a wellness program, but it is not a, a robust one. We wanted to beef it up and, and focus on the physical, mental resiliency of the officers and Bureau employees, so tying that to reducing gun violence or violent crime and enhancing is, it's a tough one. But it's in there, I think we can make the connection, and we'll see what they say about that, if, if that's something you think we should pursue. Moving on to the gun violence investigation and prosecution grant, you can see the five categories they have there. Our priorities of effort for that grant are to promote, so in twenty twenty-two, we didn't fully fund all the available police positions, and there are certain positions we didn't we zeroed out with no money, so it's an authorized position, but no, we couldn't have put anybody in or promoted somebody into there because there was no money associated with that. Our intent is to promote a forensic investigator from the, from the Uniform Patrol Division into CID and pay for that position using the grant funds. Looking at it, is, when you look at the whole picture and how we are recruiting and trying to retain people for the future to get patrol officers, detective, forensic investigators on the, out in the community. We're doing pretty good recruiting. But we have some vacancies in supervisor and forensic and detective level where if we promote people off the Uniform Patrol Division up there, we can hire patrol officers to put them into a police academy. But we have to do that slowly and systemically, so we don't drain the resources of the, of the patrol division. So that is a way to get someone into the forensic investigator position, create a patrol officer vacancy. We can hire another person and put them into a police academy so they can work on the streets of Harrisburg. Overtime details for multi-agency saturation detail for high crime areas. Earlier this year, in the first quarter of two thousand twenty-two, we experienced a surge in shootings, shootings and homicides. Why, one of the ideas that came up from the patrol division was to do some more saturation details, and that's what we started doing. And then it, it expanded into multi-agency roles with PSP, Dolphin County Crisis Response Team, other jurisdictions that came in and helped the city out to get more officers just on the street, to get out of the cars and walk in the the community and the neighborhoods and talk to people. Because the officers are working the street right now, they're answering calls for service, and they can't always be in those areas to, to to keep a tab on things or talk to people and find out what's happening, so.
DC, excuse me, you, you're addressing Resolution fifty-eight now to?
Oh, is that a different one?
Yes, yes.
Oh, were you just local law enforcement?
Yeah, I believe where fifty-six would be the application for the crime of delinquency. Okay, okay.
Yeah, I apologize.
No worries, no worries.
Okay, want me to keep going or you want me to stop?
We can stop, and I can see if there's any questions, and then we can get fifty-eight read into the record and then
I got it.
Description for that as well.
Okay.
Yep, no worries. Thank you for that. Only question I have, and I guess this could be a question from Ms. Rebecca, is there any, I guess, concern not meeting any of the listed requirements permitted by the grant for the city?
Um, sorry, I always get this wrong. No, it, it was a very accelerated timeline. It came out very early September. Everyone became aware of them about mid-September, but we're really on track, and DC Sorenson has been amazing, so I, I have no concerns about fulfilling the requirements that we need to fulfill, and we've been I, I have no concerns about fulfilling the requirements that we need to fulfill. And we've been in a lot of contact with the folks who are actually running this program and also in particular with the Doffin County folks. Kevin Kilgore, this is a really, really big effort. It's not just us kind of working on our own, sorry, on our own. It's us sort of feeding into this task force that's being communicated about and fed into with the county and the the commission, the, the group of chiefs that meet.
Chief of Police Association.
Okay, so, so CJAB and the, the Police Chiefs Association. So there's a huge effort. Everyone kind of realizes like, holy cow, this is kind of an opportunity that doesn't come along a lot. So we've got a lot of, every hand is on deck.
And what's the measurements we're taking for compliance after the grant submitted, just to make sure we're keeping up on documents, et cetera?
So it requires quarterly financial and progress reports, and those are fed in through the PCCD grants system, which we have good familiarity with because we have a VIP grant from two years ago for the CSA's. So it's, you, you just put in what you've done so far and the amount you've spent and how you can substantiate what you've spent. And then we do, there, there are various state and federal financial reports that there are, that's very basic sort of name, right? It's your number for the, the city's.
Awesome. And then in item five, section B, I think we were speaking about with the cam, body cameras, the vehicle cams, mobile units, things of that nature. Would that also leave a little bit of room for, for say gunshot detection? Commissioner, you know, I love gunshot detection. Would love to see that introduced into the city.
I hadn't got there yet. That was the next thing I was going to talk about.
Awesome. Thank you. Well, then I reserve anything else. I'll start with my far right with Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez, and thank you for all this explanation. I love the, the sheet. It was a good breakdown. So thank you. And I mean, I don't think anybody ever has an issue with applying for grants. I could say it's free money, but it's a great amount of money that can help our community. I don't have a lot of questions on it. I think more of my questions come with after if we get the grant, what that looks like. You know, how do we evaluate how we're using the money, if it's working? You know, i- is it really going to prevent gun violence? Like, we really wouldn't know until we put some things in place.
So that's a great point. And just one of the things they require you to do is, how are you going to show or how are you going to track what you're doing and how are you going to show that it's, it's reducing either gun violence, violent crime, or increasing your clearance rate? And that's one of the hardest things to do is like, how are we going to measure that? Because it is difficult. Now, how do you, how do you measure officer wellness to, to that? We have to, and that's the hardest part is I stand there in front of my computer trying to think of ways to, to show that. And because they're going to want something concrete in return for, it's, it's up to five million.
Right.
You can't come with, we can't think of a laundry list that quickly. This, and, and they may be like, no, you don't get that much. So at the end is, that's a great point, is we have to come up with those performance measures and be able to input them into, I guess, still E grants for that. I'm not a grant guy. I, I'm just learning how to write stuff now. So, but so yeah, that, that is part of entering this stuff in the system is they want to know how you're going to do that. And we haven't, it's, it's a thought process, but nothing is on paper. I can be like, I haven't produced a spreadsheet to track X. You know what I mean?
So have you, have you had to input that already, already, or that's after if we say, yes, you can apply for it, correct, or?
Well, we have to come up with the idea first.
Have you come up with any yet?
I have.
Yes, what, what, can I hear what they are, what they are? If you, if it's possible, I would.
Sure.
I'm curious.
Yeah, I am now too.
And if you, maybe I guess if it's okay if they email it to us, is that okay?
Just take one of the performance measures I came up with?
Yeah, yeah. I, I mean, I'm fine with that. If you can just email it to us and let us know like, what did you put in for the grant on how you're going to measure that? I, I think that would be a big part of knowing. Is this worth our time?
There's a, there's a section in the grant that we're, we're close to that page. It's one of the later pages. And it's, it's a set of metrics and PCCD has established their own set of metrics. And whenever we do a quarterly report or a progress report, we have to respond to those metrics every three months. You know, whether it's a number of officers or a number of gun violence incidents that we think we've helped prevent. We can also add to those for our own. And that, that's an ongoing thing. So if, if we, if we respond to a certain list that they've given us and then we add our own. And then we, if we're awarded the grant, as we go through the process, we can say, you know what, we're realizing there's other metrics that are really important too. And now we understand them. So we're adding those too. So it's kind of like an ongoing process.
Okay. Well, would you still be able to just email us the metrics you do have down just so we can see?
I think one of the biggest metrics that PCCD actually looks for is, are, we already report our UCR data through PSP to the state. So they already have that data. We, we produce quarterly reports. They're on the powered DMS, well, the city website. They, they're public facing documents. So anybody can read those things about where the city stands on, on part one and part two crimes, how many were committed, how many were cleared. So that's part of it right there. But there's other things that we think, that I think that we should show them to like, develop the spreadsheet to show how many license plates that we actually entered where you're looking for that, that the system helped. Because it, and does it help reduce violent crime? The numbers will be whatever the numbers are. We're either going to do better at it or we're not. And the numbers are going to be pretty clear. We can't change the statistics. So I can interpret them a lot of different ways, maybe different than you would. So.
Thank you for that. And my last question was, how much would the salary be for the evidence custodian?
I believe that was forty-five. I think it was forty-five.
And that's with full benefits?
Yep, management full benefits.
And are there other evidence custodians within our area?
Uh, yes. Uh, Doffin County Crisis, Doffin County detectives have one, Susquehanna Township has one. Laura Paxton does. Yeah, I thought they did too.
Okay. And we being competitive, competitive with the salaries for that, for the other counties?
A lot of them, I, I don't know.
Okay.
I know Susquehanna is a retired Harrisburg police officer and it's a part-time job.
Oh, okay.
But volume, the amount of evidence they take in is what is different.
Right. That's, you know, why I asked too. Just making sure we get qualified candidates, you know, something to think about. Thank you. I have any further questions?
Thank you, Councilwoman Ross. Um, DC, would you be able to provide what the councilwoman was asking for as far as just those small metrics via email?
Yep, I got it. Note down.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. Councilman Manson?
Uh, no questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Green?
Thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez. I do have a question or two. I see it says to hire additional non sworn support personnel, including six additional community service aides. That will bring the total complement to thirteen? All right. And are the, all the positions filled right now? It's seven right now.
Okay.
That's funded. I don't know how many, are they all filled? Okay. And so.
I think next Monday or Tuesday is the, that filled day.
Okay. So we're looking to have them all filled before the end of the year?
Yes, the seven authorized will be filled by, by Monday, or two, Monday, or whatever the eleventh is.
Okay. And then you would be looking to add six more into that program?
That's a good point. I think, I think the right number there might be five. I think twelve is what we originally asked for.
Yes.
Yep.
And then you would be looking to have that funded in the future in the budget?
Yes. That, that's, that's why we're asking, you know. And I know you have a lot more questions about that.
I do. So I'll, I'll reserve those for another time. I do have some, some reservations about, about that. And yeah, I think, I think that's kind of where I'm going to leave that one at. So that was kind of my question, kind of looking forward to looking you into the future if we're adding positions and then how it's going to impact future budgets. Because we don't want to add positions if we're not looking to obviously keep them in the future because we feel like they're positions that are needed. So I think it's important to think about the long-term impact on the police department's budget and looking at how many more positions you're looking to add to your overall personnel.
Anybody's, that's an excellent point, especially with grants. You don't want to incur a future cost where two years from now, we're like, you say no, and we're like, I'm sorry, you're fired. That's, that's not how we want to do business. And I agree with you. Here's the thing is, even if we are approved to apply for the community service aides. And we had planned on in two thousand and twenty-three, asking for the additional six again. But you're going to want metrics for that, you know, hey, what are they working on? What are they doing? Good questions. Just because we get it doesn't mean we have to go out there and spend that money. You know what I mean? So we're applying for a grant and they may look at me like, that's a good point, Harrisburg, but no. And I agree. The things we asked for in here were something we had planned on or thought about asking in the future anyway. We are going to come back to you and when budget season starts and ask for five more community service aides. We're going to ask for an evidence custodian. I'm going to ask you to fund those positions that were zeroed out or reduced for whatever reason, so we can move forward. So I would rather go for technology over people because I don't want in two years, be looking around and everyone's, people have to be let go. That's excellent.
Right. I agree with you on that. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Madam President Bowers?
Thank you. I have a question for Ms. Bulmer. Just process and timeline I always like to review. So the application is due on October the thirteenth. However, a decision on the approval of the application, I won't occur until December the fourteenth. And once that approval occurs, there will be twenty-four months for the projects to take place. So they have a start date of January first, two thousand and twenty-three and an end date of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. I just wanted to review that, just so people wouldn't expect things to occur tomorrow or October fourteenth, just to make sure that timeline was clear.
Yeah, th- thank you so much. I, I think in one of the NOFOs, it says twenty-nine months, but that's building in the time for that when they announced it to when we applied to when the awards are granted. And then we have to create the, the, we and they, we have to create the document and everybody has to sign. So yeah, so we, the first time we could start spending money under this, whatever we were, were to get, would be January one, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you. Councilmen Majors?
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Chief. Excuse me. Just, well, I guess, one question, there may be a follow-up. With respect to how we're looking to utilize the grant funding, are these the priorities of effort just listed in the category ranking or is that, you know, depending on how much money we receive, work on to? Where are we going to spread it equally? Or are we just looking to say based upon these categories if we don't get the first, if we're able to get the first priority, are we trying to spend it all down or do we have like price allocations out for each of these? Have we priced any of these different pieces out?
I can explain part of it, but I don't really know the answer because I've never applied for a grant before. I'm not sure how they get to decide how they divvy out the money to different jurisdictions. So when I, the priorities of effort there, I did not prioritize those one, two, three, four.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's, all right. That's just the way it was listed.
Yes, sir.
Those categories, okay.
Yeah. And so those categories are the different ones that we could apply for. We chose, we had met after the grant announcement and come out as a, as a staff, looked at what we wanted to do. Then we went to a Doffin County Chiefs meeting, listened to what they had to say because some of it is tied into what the county is trying to do also. So they're kind of like mutually supporting requests. Not all of them, some of them are. And I don't know how they decide, like, if they say you can have body worn cameras, but you can't have officer wellness. You know, I think it's just they just approved that part, but I'm not sure how that works.
Okay. And I guess from Ms. Bulmer, that has PCCD indicated that that's how they're going to do it? Or is it just you apply for the large pot of money? You have your categories listed based upon the award amount that you're granted. You could do anything within those parameters.
This is a fantastic question. And so we're still working through the budget and sort of how we, the budget is fairly detailed and granular and yet not. So that when we submit a budget, we say, okay, category one, we have this, 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 this. So you can't just sort of say, I would like, you know, whatever, two million dollars to do this thing that we're not telling you what it is. But what, like within that, once they give us that, if, if we're awarded, once they give us the award, can we move things around? Are we stuck with different? Is not the right one. Are, are we, you know, locked into different categories? So I have questions into PCCD about that and also to see what happens after this. And we're still actually also speaking with the county about certain things that they might be able to put into their overarching grant that then we wouldn't have to.
Very much of a draft at this point.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, and we say that knowing that like it's.
Yeah. Okay. Well, well, then I guess.
But, but that is the right question. Like, how, when we do the budget and put it in, if we get an award, how do we, what, what level of ability to converse about that and change things if we need to? Understanding that we're also one of a several moving parts and we want to interact with counties.
Okay. Well, I guess then, I guess, I guess my follow-up would be then to the extent possible in advance of next, our next meeting. If we can get some additional information since these dates are, you know, sort of back to back to each other. So, thank you.
Hundred percent.
Thank you for that. And that wouldn't be a problem getting that information. Councilman Major, thank you for that. Councilwoman Daniels?
This is just for my edification. There is any chance of kind of competing, like if, if they're given grants under Resolution fifty-six that they would reduce our grant application request under Resolution fifty-eight or vice versa? Do you know how they're making those decisions?
Right, no, a hundred percent. So one thing when they, they put, they actually put four of these things out all at the same time. There was the LLES, Local Law Enforcement Support, GVIP, Gun Violence Interrogation. And then two other smaller ones. And they're very specific where they say you can't just take one application and put it into all four. Like each one has to be unique for all the reasons that we would all want that to be true. So there shouldn't be that competition. That said, there are some similarities and overlaps. We're trying really hard not to sort of ask for, you know, the same kind of thing under two different grants. But yeah, no, it's, it's a, it's I guess my, my, my goal and my desire is always to curate and make the grant application as absolutely tight as we can. Send it in so that whoever's reading it doesn't have to do a lot of work on, on their part. I don't want to just like download a data dump and let them dig through it. So our goal is to make these two very distinct and make sure that it's clear of what we're asking for and why for each one. That said, LO, the first one that, that Jesus Swanson started speaking about has a lot more money in it. It's one thirty-five up a move.
Yep.
And then the GVIP has a small, it's about fifty million dollar pool. So there's that sort of differentiation as well. But it's such a good question and PCCD is way ahead of all of us. They're like, look, guys, don't make us do the work if you're putting in something redundant. So.
All right. Thank you. Are there any further questions on Resolution fifty-six from Council? Oh, and I do understand there is a time crunch, so I would highly suggest that we get this on the agenda for the next legislation session. Mr. Chusdale, can you please read Resolution fifty-eight inter?
All right. Resolution fifty-eight, two thousand and twenty-two. A resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to submit a grant application to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for a grant under the Gun Violence Investigation and Prosecution Grant Program of up to five million dollars to improve the police bureau's ability to investigate gun crimes.
Thank you for that. I know we were kind of intertwined in it, but just for the record sake, I wanted to make sure it was separation. Uh, DC or Commissioner, if there was anything you wanted to add about Resolution fifty-eight that we haven't spoke on or addressed yet?
Yeah. Uh, do you want me to go over the last two?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. So in reference to the gun violence investigation and prosecution grant. So the, the priorities down there, we talked about a forensic investigator, overtime details. We, the Councilman Rodriguez had, we'd met earlier this year with a, it's called Shot Spatter. We, the Councilman Rodriguez had, uh, we'd met earlier this year with a, uh, it's called Shot Spatter. What it does is it's a gunshot detecting detection system. Uh, we met with them. We actually met with them the year before that also. Again, cost was one of the the major considerations, you know, but the grant specifically allows for that kind of technology. Uh, so we intend on, we writing that today, Rebecca, I found out that the the group intervention uh, grant that we just had received for, I think, five hundred thousand dollars earlier earlier this year. Um, looking at that, one of the things they talked about during our presentation was identifying the areas in the city where, uh, we would want to place these systems because there, you can't cover like a, um, of the eleven point four square miles of the city of Harrisburg, um, and eight point one of it is actually land. You can't cover the entire city. So you had to pick out geographic pockets and put that system in those pockets. And so I'm intending to ask for three different, one uptown, one on the hill, and then one in the third highest area. Uh, so we can move that one around if we really had to. But we're not looking at that company in particular, just that kind of technology to see if that would enhance our efforts to respond quicker, find a scene faster, and perhaps collect evidence in hopes of prosecuting uh, those kind of uh, crimes. The other one is Subright System Software. That basically is a downloading of cell phones, you know, major investigations if a cellphone is found or confiscated. Um, if it was downloaded, sometimes we have to send that out to another jurisdiction or agency and we don't have it ourselves. This technology grant would allow us to purchase that software and use that forensic investigator where you're hoping to get uh, through the grant into uh, to to utilize that software, make prosecutions higher. Last thing we're going to ask for is a ring doorbell and porch lighting installations in high crime areas. And I already wrote it, but it haven't put it in the grant yet. What that basically is, a thought process, and I think it's come up before, is our intent is to cooperate with community groups to identify households in high crime areas who would like to install install a ring doorbell. And we would pay for the ring doorbell. We pay for the installation. And in cooperation with the county is intent on using them to pay for the subscription service for the two year period. Um, another one is identify people who would like a porch light put on their home, you know, front or back porch to light up the area. So I I think, you know, work with community groups and work with people who it helps anyway, it have a ring doorbell. It helps to have lighting on your porches anyway. But assist people who may not be able to afford that or don't didn't think about it. And, you know, to send the community service aides and officers out to knock on doors and they're like, hey, look, we're offering this program. If you're interested, this is how you do it. And to work with the community groups to help help get that enacted. So those are the things we're going for for the gun violence investigation and prosecution grant, if there's any questions.
I have no questions more than a statement. Uh, I I have to keep kind of beating it down. I'm a big fan of gunshot detection. It could really minimize our um, response time and also officers that have the opportunity to kind of self dispatch with the technology that then goes to their phone and Cody system. So it'd just be a big, big, big uh, increase in movement to the modern age for the city of Harrisburg. I look forward to that, gentlemen. Um, and without anything else, I will start to my mediate, right? Councilwoman Daniels, any questions? I thank you, Councilmen Majors.
No, no questions, uh, other than I guess I'm I'm hoping that in conversations with neighborhood groups should just go through. There's just a larger conversation about, you know, the data in terms of the rain. Um, I guess will they be required to provide the data to the city? You know, who owns the data since the city's making the purchase, et cetera. But I think those are a little bit more granular details than, um, I guess we have to get the uh, see what happens on the grant first, but those are just some of my initial concerns, but glad we're applying for the funds. Thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam President Bowers.
Thank you. I guess it's more of a comment. I don't want to be premature. I do have questions about the ring doorbells and the porch light installation. Like what community groups would you be working with? How many ring doorbells and porch lights do you intend to install? Um, but as Councilman Major said, I don't want to be premature, so I don't have any additional questions.
I would take your suggestions and even the amounts I'm making up in my head, I'm like, how many could we realistically do in a year? You know what I mean? Because that's the hard part is we have to be able to find a contractor and pay for it.
Right.
You know, purchase the ring doorbells and identify people who want want to have them there. Um, so.
And it's for a two year subscription as well. So I think that's something to consider.
If you have any ideas, I'm all open up till October thirteen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, Vice President Green.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Councilman Madsen.
Oh, thank, no questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Uh, Councilwoman Ross.
I don't have any questions either. Mine were about the the ring doorbell camera and the lighting. It's a great idea, but too, just making sure the community knows why they would be getting installed if they're um, responsible for it afterwards. But I think it's, yeah, it's premature. We, I think it's some things we have to figure out, but I think it would be like something we really have to talk to the community about and understand the expectations for it.
And the hope is, I mean, with lights is pretty easy.
Right.
Uh, the ring doorbells.
You can see everybody who's coming in another.
No strings attached.
Yeah.
Why would you, you have to get a ring doorbell, but you're forced to give us the, look. We just want to help people out. If they if they can help us out in an investigation, that'd be great. If they can't, I understand.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And I just just to echo the sentiments of my colleagues that um, would probably be one of the more major logistical things we would love to hear more about, um, as far as the ownership of it and how it proceeds after that two year subscription. Um, but if there are no further questions, is there anything you guys would like to add? All right, well, I would like to recommend that resolution fifty eight be put on the agenda for our next legislative session. And uh, thank you all for being here this evening. Anthony Russo Food Safety, are they here today? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for being here. Mr. Truesdale, can you please read resolution fifty seven in for the record?
Resolution fifty seven, twenty twenty two. A resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Anthony Russo Food Safety and Environmental Health Inspection LLC to conduct health inspections of food facilities within the city of Harrisburg.
Awesome. Thank you. And who from the administration will be speaking or uh, can you state your name for the records? Please speak into the microphone. I think you have to cut it off, Mr. Russo.
And I'll just note, I think there's probably a miscommunication because Ms. Wright is not here. And I checked and I had five o'clock email saying, when is this going down? So she, I think she thought I was not here yet.
So everyone's still comfortable proceeding?
Yes.
Okay, absolutely. Um, all right, Mr. Russo, thank you for joining us this evening. Um, would you like to give us an overview of resolution fifty seven for council, please?
Uh, yes. I am a um, registered sanitarian, certified health officer. I specialize in food safety inspections. I pride myself in adding or performing value added inspections. I'm on contract with the city of York and with um, Susquehanna Township. And um, Nelvo reached out to me to see if I was interested in helping her with the city of Harrisburg. And I said most definitely I am interested. Try not to get too busy. Um, so therefore I've limited the amount of time I could dedicate to helping the city of Harrisburg to two days per month. Which doesn't sound a lot, but you have a lot of restaurants, a lot of food facilities. So it does take a little bit off her plate by bringing me in or bringing me on board.
Um, and thank you for that. Um, two, two days a month, am I correct?
Just two days a month.
Okay, and I believe I've read it was fifty dollars per inspection and then it was twenty dollars for a follow up. What was your um, inspection numbers for the previous year?
Uh, inspection numbers for the other facilities that I've done. Susquehanna has a hundred and sixty five food establishments. And the city of York, I helped them out with ninety to a hundred food inspections. They have, they're probably about the same size as the city of Harrisburg, but I've committed to ninety to a hundred per year.
Okay.
So I go down there twice a month to help the city of York.
All right, thank you for that. And what um, specific certifications do you hold for food safety and handling?
Um, well, I am a registered sanitarian and then part of that classification is a registered environmental health specialist with N E, N E H A National Environmental Health Association. It's a federal agency that kind of oversees all the food inspection stuff. I am certified with Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture. I am a certified health officer also, which is um, from Pennsylvania Department of Health. But that also covers restaurant inspections, poll inspections, anything environmental health.
That's what I was going to ask. The serve safe would constitute for, absolutely.
Under the food.
Yep, absolutely. With the department of state, that's what I was going to allude to, but thank you for, I'm getting there. I have uh, nothing further. I'll start with my far right with Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez, and thank you, Mr. Russo, for joining us today. So, um, how many days does it take for you to do a follow up on a restaurant? And I guess you would be doing a follow up if they didn't pass certain inspections and then you go back. Is that what the follow up is?
It it takes about an hour to do the onsite inspection. It takes a little bit of prep time to read what the prior violations were, about an hour onsite. Then I usually go back to my home and I enter it into the Pennsylvania Agriculture's database, which takes up to thirty minutes to do that. So um, follow ups are sometimes a little easier because you're going with um, a focus in mind, so you don't have to look at the big picture. Maybe a follow up might be twenty, thirty minutes, depends on what the failures are.
Okay, and then how many days between the uh, first inspection and the follow up do you have? Then you said two days a month.
It's usually assigned by the inspector uh, based on the severity of the interactions. Um, it could be, you know, one week, it could be thirty days, forty five days, ninety days for structural problems.
Okay. Thank you. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Madsen.
Uh, no questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Green.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Uh, I guess one question I have is, uh, on average, how many inspections do you do in a day?
I usually do five a day.
Okay, so it will be about ten a month for the city of Harrisburg if you do a two day average?
Yes.
All right.
So that's that's a hundred, a hundred and twenty that I could commit to.
Okay, all right. That's the only question I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President Bowers.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, I'm not sure what happened with Ms. Wright. I don't know what the miscommunication was there, but I know that uh, your assistance is something that she has been very vocal about for a while now. So I'm happy to see that this agreement is in place. I know that you, your services will definitely be a big help to her. Um, she noted in a previous email that uh, you're, by you working on a per inspection basis, it will be a huge help in achieving the compliance goals for the number of retail inspections per year as outlined in the FDA code. I'm not sure how many uh, inspections that would be for the city of Harrisburg. Are you aware?
Well, usually, usually a food establishment has to be inspected once per year. Uh, unless you're in a vulnerability group like schools and twice per year.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I don't have any other questions. I just wanted to note that Ms. Wright um, has spoken very highly of you and your services to assist the city of Harrisburg. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmen Majors.
Uh, thank you, and um, I guess most of the questions that I did have were already uh, were asked. Um, so two days a month. Ten a month, just to a hundred a year. Um, and we're capped off at twenty thousand. So I guess one question. So how many, on average, how many uh, follow ups have you had to do in the other jurisdictions that you're, um, that you serve in this capacity as?
A follow up is a failed inspection, fire inspection. Um, I probably average about one or two per month between the city of York and Susquehanna Township.
Okay.
Um, on average, one or two, sometimes zero, sometimes a little bit more.
Okay, and then um, you mentioned the establishments in Susquehanna Township and your work there. Are you the sole inspector for Susquehanna Township and then you assist York in the same way you would be assisting the city of Harrisburg? Okay, all right. Thank you. No further questions right now.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman Daniels.
Thank you. So I just want to be clear. So have you already started helping the city or has this?
No.
Okay.
I've not.
And um, the I guess this is for lobbyists. So, um, you will, so he will be a contractor, an employee?
It's, uh, it's, there's a contract attached to the resolution. It's through twenty twenty four. I believe it's grant funded. Uh, which is why it's an addition and a supplement to what an employee is already doing. Um, yeah, then Ms. Wright uh, applied for a grant related to this.
So a grant is funding this expense?
This expense, yes.
Um, so he will be a contractor for us, not an employee?
Yes, he'll be a professional service contract.
Okay.
And which is why it's in front of city council right now.
And then so does that mean, are there like any insurance coverage issues? And will we be providing it or does he bring it with him?
He must provide a professional assurance. That that's in the contract as well. And that's been a discussion that's been ongoing. But the city has standards for insurance. They're pretty well established. We established them through our broker Marsh quite some time ago. Um, and those numbers haven't changed over the years.
And and I do have my own liability insurance.
As a person or as an entity?
As an entity, yeah, I have an LLC that I go by for protection for me and for the enterprises that I serve.
And are there any kind of insurance coverage issues that are like peculiar to the food industry?
Yeah, there are.
And and you have?
If I would pass someone, if I would pass a facility and then there would be a major foodborne illness where people would die, you know, within short distance, I would be liable. So that, so therefore I have insurance to protect me and my family.
And so that, and that's not the one that the city provides?
No, we we don't provide the insurance. They provide the insurance and give, add us to their certificate of insurance. Uh, but I, but I agree, the insurance frankly protects the contractor and their assets and their business as much as anything. But we, so we're required to show that they're a responsible business owner and have that type of insurance so that they can, we can, we can send them out into the community. We would have totally different legal issues than a private contractor would in an inspection, or just the law is just going to be different for a municipality versus a private inspector.
And then, um, so just in general, I don't have the budget in front of me, but did we did we approve a staff person to do this role?
I honestly have no idea, but I don't think so.
And is there any sense of how much, how many more um, inspections we would need to get done? Like, do we anticipate revisiting this contract?
I don't have specifics. I believe uh, the contractor here basically had, would have limited availability based on his explanation.
Yeah.
Because of his other work. So I am, I don't have a percentage from our health uh, inspector on how many are needed versus how many are done. Although I'm sure that request could come through uh, the codes office where she works to see if they have any statistics or numbers on that.
I I think.
I don't know how many are done, but you have four hundred and twenty five food establishments in the city domain, which is a big task for one person to do.
It is a big task.
Possible one person to accomplish. Almost possible, one person to accomplish.
And so in the past, how have we been meeting our goal?
I am not the person who can answer that question.
Okay, I guess, I think that's it for me. Thank you.
And that's all regulated by Pennsylvania Department of Agriculture, where it is a law that a food establishment has to be inspected once per year. It's not rigidly enforced, but it is, they do monitor the database to make sure it's being done.
Thank you for that. Any further comments or questions from my colleagues on council?
Yes, hopefully. Would it be, if you, if you wouldn't mind Chair Rodriguez asking Ms. Wright to attend our next meeting to some of the questions I, I do have. I don't wanna, aren't for Mr. Russo would prefer.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
Just, just for clarity, the next meeting's legislative session, would you want to suspend the rules and have that discussion that, at that time?
Yes, particularly as it results in, excuse me, as it relates to the number of facilities we have, number of inspections that are conducted every year. You know, how that breakdown's gonna be, you know, we appreciate the additional assistance and if she needs additional staffing. I know at one point there was discussion about building up the, excuse me, health office and the health officer to have a Bureau of Health within the city, which some of this could potentially fall between codes and a, a health office. So just some questions for a brief suspension of the rules.
But, but your request is for her to be here next Tuesday. That's all, yes. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmen Majors. Neil, would that be difficult at all to get that word out? I'll reach out as well.
You should reach out, but I will let the mayor's office know and Ms. Wright know and her supervisor know that that's the request. If that's an issue, there should be a response to you pretty quickly, that if there's a conflict or something like that.
Yep, and just to, to address the concerns of my fellow councilmen, I would definitely support putting this on the next legislative session with the contingent that Ms. Melva could be here to answer any further questions.
And there, there frankly, there may be a written report that could, could come down. It's already written and that may simplify it for everybody.
Yep, thank you. And if there is nothing else, I do support this going on the next agenda on our legislative session under that contingent that she is here to answer any further questions. And that concludes the business for the Public Safety Committee for Harrisburg City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to remind everyone, Ms. Wright did come before us in April to share a quarterly report on behalf of the health office, but I'm not sure if she shared any data. So we will extend an invitation and ask her to participate in our next legislative session on October eleventh. Okay, at this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Just a few housekeeping rules. One moment, if you could please state your name and your address. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live. You will have two minutes to share your comment and Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timer. So I'll begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Yes, please.
My name is Eugenio Michael Albano and I reside at one fifteen South Street, one seven one oh one. I'd like to preface my remarks by saying that I am not here so much for myself. And I say that because I have two off-street parking spaces and I have two other tenants who don't need street parking at this point. However, I've been a property owner for more than forty-two years on South Street. So I consider that I have quite a bit of my life invested in that neighborhood. And I have done some research on the situation of Pine Street because I've heard hearsay, rumors, facts maybe from the past that Pine Street was needed for commercial property, for commercial vehicles, for commercial parking. I took, and on the back of the photographs, you'll see the dates for each photograph. I took these at two different days, on the September the eighth and September the ninth. And since then, I've been on that street many times and I could have taken a lot more photographs. You'll see from the photographs in the time of the day, the amount of space that is available on Pine Street that could be used for my neighbors on either Pine Street, South Street, State Street. Now, there's two, two issues here. First, I want to talk about the issue that I promised my neighbors I would come. So I'm convinced that on-street could easily be stipulated for permit parking. From the Planning Commission, initiated in fifth of January. It's the bottom of your resolutions. Now therefore, we agree all that Harrisburg Planning Commission votes by unanimous decision, for the zero, to support a request to allow on-street parking along the one hundredth block of Pine Street for residents eligible for the C A N zone one residential parking permits and to forward such a request to City Council and the administration for their consideration. Now, I will tell you, when I, when I started firing around, I was surprised at the number of people at City Hall who wasn't sure where this decision lied. But it was a gentleman from the Planning Commission who forwarded this copy to me and made it very clear to me that it was the City Council that I had to address.
Okay, sir. Thank you for your time. Your two minutes is up.
Now, I think I need more than two minutes for this. But I have neighbors here to speak with. I have a gentleman here that wants to speak on behalf of that. And on this issue, I will then go ahead. I have something else, but not specifically on permit parking, but it relates to street. So I will appreciate you will take a good look at the photographs and, and any questions you have. Before I go, am I allowed to ask the questions or is that my problem? I don't know.
It is not. It, it's, it's a public comment period, not an exchange.
If you'd like to speak with any council member following the meeting, we, that can occur. We, one of our council members is a member of the Planning Commission.
I misunderstood when I spoke to your gentleman there in back and preparing for this meeting. So I misunderstood the information, but at this point, I'll let it go.
Well, you're welcome to say after the meeting, after your neighbors are done. As I mentioned, one of our council members is a member of the Planning Commission. Perhaps she can clarify the action that was taken in January, but.
Right here.
No, no, I understand. I'm just saying she may have more insight than the rest of us since she is a member.
Guess I should say that the box talks.
Good evening. I'm John Seaton. I live at one nineteen South Street in Harrisburg, and I appreciate coming before all of you councilmen. I know that our neighbor who has since moved has started this long ago, actually in November of 2020. She also continued in November of 2021, and I believe she came before the Planning Commission and the Parking Authority. Both groups had agreed to try to do that, to open it up Pine Street for additional parking spaces. The reason is because Presbyterian Apartments has like a hundred sixty apartments. Benmar, which is new and it's a wonderful apartment building, has approximately sixty-four, I believe, apartments. And then there are all the places on South Street. There's the apartments above the Burger Yum. And anyway, I want to make this fast to get it over with because I know you, I have two minutes. I feel so sorry for the Presbyterian apartment people because they can't walk five blocks with groceries. You know, they're elderly, they need help. And they're really out of, out of, out of resources with their cars. And it's, it's really since the Benmar came in, and I know other places in Harrisburg are being developed for apartments. It's great and we love it. I've been a resident here for over thirty years on South Street. And, you know, I've seen things go up and down and up and down. Now we have a new administration and I'm certainly hoping that this administration will be very good. I know Congresswoman Vice President Green was a member of the Planning Commission and she heard Angela's spiel about things. I just want to say, and I'll be out of here, we have petitions, we have testimony, we have everything you need to help us make more parking down in Harrisburg. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'm Hispanic. I talk fast, so I think I'm gonna meet your two-minute criteria. My name is Rigoberto Ramos. I reside at three twenty-two of North Second Street Presbyterian Apartments. Just want to say thank you for being in service, Madam President and the committee itself, as you try to do a wonderful job bringing this community together. My concern is a little piggybacking on what they're saying. I've been at three twenty-two North Second Street Presbyterian Apartments for a little over five years. When I came five years ago, it was an issue of what they spoke about, the parking. Let me fast forward now, five years now. In those five years, as she mentioned, there's been a facility, Benmar, who she mentioned, with a little over sixty apartments with only sixteen parkings. Okay, on top of that, there's been two businesses besides Burger Yum that have opened up right across the street from three twenty-two Presbyterian Apartments. That's Near East, I believe I'm spelling that right, and then the Colombian Restaurant. I stand to be corrected. I don't want to hinder their name, but I believe it starts with an A. So a combination of all that, drawing the weak, of people coming, is the business to eat. People come and park their car. So someone like us, right, that need our parking when we come with our groceries, most of the time, those parkings that are available to us are taken by people that are parking there. Okay, either to go dine in the restaurant or to pick up their food, and it's a hassle. That's number one. Number two is that when it comes to the weekend, I'm quite sure you guys know how it gets down there. So people come, and I've seen at Presbyterian Apartments, we have over a hundred and sixty apartments with only sixteen parking spaces. Six of them are occupied by the staff, which leaves only ten for the residents. So in closing, those are concerns that I have, and, and I'm just hoping that down the line, we can find something because there's parking for the city in the back that maybe we can utilize at a maybe low price. And the last thing is, even if I don't reap the rewards of any changes that may come, at least I planted the seed tonight for other senior citizens that will come behind me and for whatever reason I leave, that maybe someone has stepped up, planted the seed, so they won't have to go through what we're going through. Thank you for everything and have a nice evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer public comment? So it's generally one comment per matter. Now, since it's a second matter, let me finish and see if there's anyone else. I don't see anyone, but I would like to extend that courtesy and you may come back up. Did you have a comment?
To say that I live on South Street too.
Okay.
Having the same problems everybody else is having.
You mind stating your name just for our meeting record, please?
It's Ann Yellet, and I live at one seventeen South Street. And it's just, the biggest problem with the Benmar parking is that they walk to work, which is wonderful, but they leave their cars on the street all the time. And we've always had on South Street resident parking, but people have gone in and out. So, you know, it's been an in-and-out thing. And as Jean said about Pine Street, on that first block of Pine Street, there are two businesses, all of which have their own parking, so nobody is using those spaces. And the whole idea of this is to get residential parking on Pine Street to relieve South Street because it's only getting worse and it will get even worse when we have the new building, that they're gonna tear down the old building and put another one up. The old dunnery is coming down and that's gonna be another hit for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one. Anyone to my left? Seeing and hearing no one. You had a second comment, sir, or would you like to speak with one of us after the meeting to discuss further? Okay, just a reminder, please speak into the mic. I think some of your comments may have not been heard because you weren't speaking into the mic earlier, so if you could just speak into that mic, thank you. Yes.
Now, this topic is a little bit personal. It's about the parking, but it's not about that idea about Pine Street. We have a problem, a lot of us in our neighborhood, getting services to our properties because, as you know, the parking is four dollars an hour. And if you want to hire a cleaning person and you're paying them twenty dollars an hour, they're not going to, they won't take the job because they don't want to pay four dollars an hour. It's just math. I've had an exterminator which comes quarterly, get tickets twice. I had a cabinet maker deliver one cabinet to my property and I didn't know he was coming in from out of town with a trailer behind him. He got two tickets because he parked on north on River Street, where incidentally, there's a lot of parking that's done, but for some reason, they like to ticket if they're parking in front of my place. This gentleman got two tickets, one for his truck and one for the attached trailer. Sixty dollars to deliver a cabinet. So what I'm thinking is, not related to the permit parking, but I think that there should be some way that we could have either, I see fifteen-minute free parking spaces all over the city. And I know that on Second Street, when they're delivering beer and so forth to the restaurants, there's double parking. I don't expect them to get tickets, but we're at a disadvantage to be able to get a plumber, an electrician, or anybody on the street if there is a space. Now, I go to the, I pay fifteen dollars or ten dollars and I get, you know, permits for a service person. I guess if there's a space, that's one of the solutions. That's, that's my comment.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Council members, the time is seven twenty-five PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.